We reached our read thirty with Sam from the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Motion to accept the agenda flexibility.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second to accept the agenda flexibility, also favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, old business, Kurt.
Hey, thank you. Really, my only old business item is if the agenda is the same one that I have should be right underneath it is dealing with the tax commission. So if that's all right, can we go right to that?
Yep.
Do you want to do something?
No, we'll go right to that.
Okay. Hi.
That's the agenda.
So the, as you know, the county council approved on the fourteenth the increase to the inkeeper's tax. And that was a result of some new legislation. But in addition to that, there is an opportunity for you, the commissioners, to restructure the way the tax commission is set up, which is the entity, of course, that doles out those funds to various entities like the CDB, et cetera. And there are basically six different items that we'd like to have you consider. Housekeeping matters to address in reestablishing the county convention and visitors' commission. I'll just quickly summarize those and we can get in any specifics that you want. But basically, the old ordinance, which was done in nineteen ninety-three, had some provisions in it that have since been, the statutes allowed us to change and we've just not addressed them. And there's never been a real need to, but since the council acted on the new increase, the idea was we might as well clean all this up now at the same time. So, so the plan has been to present you today with an ordinance that would make six basic revisions. One is changing the current two-year terms to the statutory, statutorily permitted three-year terms. The second one would be actually changing the name. The old name under the statute was lengthy. I'm not going to read it, but I'm basically changing it now to basically the convention and visitors' commission. And remember, remember, this is the tax commission that we're talking about, not the CDB. So for those that are trying to follow what I'm talking about, it relates to the commission, which is the entity that actually addresses the distribution of the funds. Excuse me, apologize for my voice. The next item, which is quite interesting, is that the new statute does not require members to reside in the county. And so we've at least taken out that requirement. Doesn't mean that you wouldn't continue to appoint residents, but you're not required to. And then the fourth item would be that there were requirements for most of the members to have some sort of inkeeper experience or business or be involved in the, you know, visiting visitor bureau world, if you will, tourism industry. That requirement now only applies to two of the members. So we've opened, I think the idea is to make, it's been hard to keep people across the state involved in these tax commissions. And so that has been loosened up. And then two others that relate to the auditor's office, which we agree with that Kathy would like to see made changes to. And it really has to do with the fact that their budget is subject to review. And sometimes it, she needs additional time to be able to put the council in a position where they're ready to go. So we'd like to have a deadline of submission no later than June one. And that's been incorporated into this new ordinance, if you're willing to address it. And then also to provide, be provided copies of commission records so that she can comply with after requests that they, that come in. And we've had some this past year or so. And so these are all what I would consider to be housekeeping matters that if you're willing to consider today are ready for you to. And like I said, the council passed the increase and that's already been recorded. Kathy's already communicated with the Department of Revenue and actually gotten them to acknowledge that August one, I think, is the collection date for the new tax. And you're not required to do this, so if you're not prepared to today, that's fine. It's just that it would be nice to see.
When do they, when do they normally turn in their budgets by?
Well, that's been an issue for Kathy. They kind of.
They get it in after I ask them.
And it's been a problem.
So there's never really been a.
No.
They, they just do it when they could.
Okay.
So we're asking you to help us to encourage them to get it in by that date.
Yeah. I think I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero seven dash twenty-one A. An ordinance reestablishing the county convention and visitor commission with the changes noted.
Second. Motion is second to approve the county ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion, yeah, motion to a second reading.
Second. Motion is second to wait, second reading, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Judge Walz.
Here to apologize and ask for permission. Well, there's still the grant to sign potentially, the agreement. The court did, as the Supreme Court had previously paid for the, the telephonic interpreting services until July first. And then the, and the first I heard about the requirement for a grant was, I want to say, early May, which, but it might have been in the end of April. My chief reporter came to me saying, got an email from another, another county where a special judge had worked one of our cases and she had said, look at this. Did you guys see this? Because basically apparently they were using the language line. I think a lot of counties were to an excessive amount. And so the Supreme Court decided they weren't going to pay for them directly. They were going to require you to ask for a grant. So then a week or two later, I remember getting, I remember seeing an email at that point in time with an online application. And the period closed May thirty-first to apply for it. So I think it was within a week or two, maybe days, honestly, when we, we applied without, it was, and it did not have a sig. I don't believe the grant is a signature line for the commissioners. It's direct money from the Supreme Court covering a service that they previously paid for directly. And unfortunately, there's a, you have to do quarterly reporting for it if you want it. You then also have to submit vouchers to the Supreme Court for it. And they've got a full-time employee handling that. And it is one thousand five hundred dollars is the total amount. And I'm requesting authorization as I did, we did, I had the chief reporter fill out the application, online application. There's not, it wasn't a printed application. And I did send the link and I apologize with, with the application information today. I did previously send a PDF of the proposed grant, which I don't believe requires commissioner's signature in asking permission to apply for the grant, to get, potentially get reimbursement for the interpreter services, which I guess to be completely candid, if, if you don't authorize it, I understand. We are going to be, we have to use the interpreter services, services and we're, and we'll be paying for it either way. But I apologize that I didn't immediately. I should have, and I'll, moving forward, if there's a grant, even if it's directly from the Supreme Court to the court, I will try to make sure I get it on the agenda as quickly as possible last year authorizations. So permission to.
Make motion through the court to apply for a fifteen hundred dollar grant.
Second.
Good motion is second to allow the court to apply for the grant, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it. Have a great day.
Yep.
Okay, Sherry Perkins, Council Aging, you out there?
I have black space to request it. Um, don't laugh. Oh, and hey, you can now join. What, when's your official birthday? Tomorrow? That's what I thought. Cause I'm only older than you, but we're twins. And now add Heidi to that.
Finally get my twenty-five cent coffee.
And you can get your AAP card, so you can join our little group. Anyway, I am here. I have my quarterly report information finally. I know it was approved to sign outside of a meeting, but I didn't even get it until the end of last week. So I figured I was already on the agenda. I might as well bring it. And so I am, Terry has to sign the quarterly report. I sent you guys all that information. I'm sure you reviewed it all. Yes. And so for the third quarter, or second quarter, not third, we did nine thousand two hundred and seventy-three trips. And that was a hundred and twelve, three, a hundred and twelve thousand miles and five thousand sixty-six revenue hours. So in the passenger fares, we collect on the vans with seventy-one thousand six hundred and thirty. So we're still, I mean, I tell you guys that you don't, it's hard to see when you're not dealing with it. But we collect the most on our vans than any other transit system in the state. So that's because most of the people are paying for whatever, going to work or wherever they're going. So I just need that quarterly claim signed by Terry.
Fifty-three eleven.
The fifty-three eleven, yes.
And that's one.
Can you guys go to other counties, surrounding counties, pick people up?
We pick up people that live in Lagrange County and we'll transport them to other counties. Yes.
The reason I ask is I see Noble County transport up by my place quite a bit for some reason.
Going to Dace, do they go to?
I don't know. They're up driving around the county, so I don't know what they're doing up there.
That's another story. It probably shouldn't be publicly discussed. I have told Endat that I will take over, over Noble if that comes about. I already said at our north-south meeting, I said, I'm telling you right now, this is what's going to happen. So when it comes.
She's up for quite a bit here lately. I'm just wondering.
We had a trip scheduled from someone from the nursing home here going to, it was like going to a wedding or something like that. And they called Noble because it was in Noble County, like just inside Noble County. Noble's was going to pick up, pick them up and take them home. Makes no sense, but whatever. I did say if it comes about that we would do it. So anyway, um, we try not to, like, the people that we transport are in Lagrange County. And a lot of times they'll want to go visit somebody. Most of the time, unless it's really close to the county line, we don't go back and pick them up just because of lack of drivers and lack of money. So. Second thing I have, which Terry did sign the e-signature, but we took delivery of a small transit van. And I already submitted that to Endat. The payment has to go through. Did I send you a copy of that, Kathy? Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so. And then we got notification a week ago that four of the new vans that we had that are less than two years old, we had to pull off the road, the rear entry low floors, because there's a recall on them. It's a safety recall. So if you're driving it personally, it's okay because it's the side airbag. But when you're transporting people, Endat said, no, you need to pull them off the road immediately. So that's four of my vans. And so of course I threw a fit, which it's not Endat's fault, but they still had to listen to me. Because those vans get like twenty-three miles an hour average. My big small transits get eight. So when we're transporting people to Fort Wayne for these specialty appointments, which we do a lot of, that's a huge difference. But it's not their fault and the parts aren't even available for the recall yet. So, yeah.
Always call one of the brown cars. They transfer, they're going to transport people too.
Right. Um, yeah, so we had to switch everything and whatever. It's just been fun. And then my next thing, how do you want me, this is not council on aging. The request for the opiate fund.
Is there going to be a request?
Yes. That's the one I asked you. That wasn't a question.
I know. It was a bunch of statements and I said, there's no question in there.
Okay, so I'm on the mental health substance abuse for Lagrange County. And we just had a meeting and they are doing a suicide overdose awareness event. It's at Prairie Heights. It's September twenty-fourth. The reason why they picked Prairie Heights is because there was a student suicide from there. It's not till September twenty-fourth. And Christina Blasky just gave out the information. And I said, well, why can't, if you need sponsors, why can't they use the opiate funds for that? The non-restricted, because it'd just be to sponsor this event. So the a thou, a thousand dollars is the awareness event sponsor for that. So Kathy said, I had to bring it to you first.
We have money in there.
There are no monies appropriated in the unrestricted opioid settlement funds. So it will require a council additional appropriation.
But we could get that done before September.
Yeah, I have to advertise by Friday noon for the next round for the August approvals.
That's not council on aging. That's me being on the mental health collaboration.
Need them.
She's given positive recommendation to council to approve the additional.
Well, we'll do, we'll just, we'll make it a motion here. That way we have it. We got this one, fifty-three eleven grant.
Which, this one I already approved.
We already approved that one?
I think we did because we authorized you to sign it outside of.
Yes.
That's the one?
Yes.
I went through, I signed, I signed so many things.
You were gone and they approved it.
Okay.
But my program manager was out of town as well, so it took longer to get the claim back.
And the fifty-three thirty-nine one was approved outside of me?
No, that one.
That's when you do need to.
Yes.
You've already signed it, Dr. Simon's, but we need a formal motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the section fifty-three thirty-nine rule. Report.
It's a vehicle claim.
Yeah, the vehicle claim and have the president sign it.
Second.
I felt we should do it here since it's a vehicle. You're not really paying for it, but.
The motion is second to approve the fifty-three thirty-nine vehicle payment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We need a.
I'll make a motion to approve the opioid, what do you, what's, I can't think what you said was for. Oh, the awareness event for suicide and overdose.
Subject to council.
Subject, yeah. It's a positive recommendation to the council.
Second. We have motion second to approve a thousand dollars out of the opiate fund if council approves it.
Before you vote, you said positive recommendation. You're saying it was approval of it as long as I fund it. That's two different things.
Oh.
Same thing.
Well, okay, so I'd make a motion. It goes with the positive recommendation and we approve it if they fund it.
Okay, thank you.
Second. Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
And what about the building? Should I wait or the twenty-five thousand that was already approved? You guys sent, said, okay, I had to go to council, but it hasn't been officially approved to spend.
On that one, they gave a positive recommendation to council. Council appropriated the funds. Now you think you need their formal approval to spend the money.
That's.
That's the reason I got clarification there is because it's.
What you asked me about.
So she won't do that for this one, but that one we.
Correct. That one, I went back and listened to make sure.
Yep.
I told you I had lots of stuff. Jeez.
So I'll make a motion to approve, Sherry, to spend the twenty-five thousand that was approved by the council for their new barn, garage.
You can't say garage.
Barn.
Yes.
For the new barn. The motion is second to approve the spending of twenty-five thousand for the council needing new building. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Why can't we call it a garage?
Because of how the state views it. Because if it's a garage, then there's like oil, gas, that type of stuff going on.
There's vehicles in there. There'll be oil and gas.
No, they're Elcat vans. They're perfect condition.
Well, I didn't mean.
They only drive forty thousand dollars.
Vehicle, I meant inside the vehicle.
Okay, that's it, I think.
Oh, you, oh, I want to.
Okay.
Is that all you have?
I think so. You want me to just stand up here and talk and tell you everything I did? I can't.
That's okay, Sherry.
I know. You said you didn't want to listen to me.
Um, planning?
Good morning. I'm here to present a amendment to the new unified development ordinance. Through public hearing, Plan Commission gave it a positive recommendation to change the minimum acreage size first time cut out in an A-one zoning district from two, from the original five acres to drop it down to two, between two and five acres. So that chart's been changed. Also, we've reviewed the drainage way definition. It had a three-hundred-foot setback from the drainage way and the drainage way definition included a closed conduit, which would have been a tile. And so we believe that that needed to be taken out. You don't need a three-hundred-foot setback from tile running in the ground. Changed the definition of parent parcel. Parent parcel now is any parcel legally existence and on October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, which is the date the UDO zoning map was adopted. And then definition of subparcell was added, any parcel that has been split off from a parent parcel. So those are the three changes that they gave a positive favorable recommendation for.
Okay.
I don't have any issues with it. They, they said it was a living document, so.
Yeah, it does change.
Yeah. All right. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seven dash twenty-one B. Remember, it's amending the text of the UDO. And that's basically just cleaning it up.
Second. The motion is second to approve the ordinance, the changes to the county's UDO. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. No.
Planned at the first reading.
Maintenance department.
Good morning. I have a couple of things here to talk about. Uh, one is the health department down, down there across the house. The health department is in net major need of some remodeling. We have three offices down there plus a conference room. We've got site or wood siding or wood, wood walls that need replaced, paneling, basically. We have ceiling tile falling down. And we got a couple of sinks that need to be capped off and so forth like that. Just renovated, total renovation, three offices and a conference room. Uh, it did take, got some estimates done. One is JJ, JJ's roofing and remodeling for eleven thousand eight hundred dollars. And I got another one done here from DNS Services for thirteen thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars. So I'm recommending you go with JJ Roofing here for eleven thousand eight hundred dollars.
Make motion to allow maintenance to go JJ Roofing remodeling for eleven thousand eight hundred dollars for the Grand County Health Department.
Thank you.
Second. Then the money comes out of their budget, right?
That is correct.
Okay. The motion is second to approve the remodeling for JJ Roofings and remodeling. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I also have one from one of the members of the Lagrange Arts Committee. For final Friday, this coming Friday, they want to use the west side of the courthouse to draw on the sidewalks with sidewalk chalk. They want to do a contest. They want to have kids involved, what have you not, and they want to use sidewalk to draw on, so.
So that's the west side?
Just the west side there. Yeah, they wanted to use some sidewalk chalk. I didn't see any harm in it, but I just thought I'd run that by you guys first.
What sidewalk? They're going to use the outside perimeter one or the ones leading up to the courthouse?
No, the outside one. They're probably to the, they said something to the south, south sidewalk that's coming into the ramp right there.
And there'll be nothing on the yard?
No. Speaking of the yard.
We'll get done with this one.
Okay. Yeah.
Second.
The motion is second to allow the arts. The motion is second to allow the arts on the sidewalks with the chalk, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Okay. And.
I want you to bring up the one about the yard.
I've been approached several times from Farmer's Market. Uh, they're usually, right now, they're currently on, having Farmer's Market on Spring Street. And they have to close the whole entire Spring Street off. So they approached me several times about having Farmer's Market on the lawn, their own south side of the garage. So they don't have to close off Spring Street. And they want to have it on the lawn. They said that the trees provide shade for the produce, what have you not. And I didn't get, I didn't say yes, I didn't say no, I said I have to run that by the commissioners. And.
I, I'm, I'm not in favor of it, because we get them on the yard, they're going to, everything's going to, we got irrigation out there. Matter of fact, this, after he asked me, the weekend before, they were on the yard, there was tents or anything on the yard, so, on that Saturday. So I, I'm just not a big fan of putting people on our courthouse.
Gary, is this actually a La Grange event?
Pardon?
La Grange City.
Town of La Grange, is this actually the event of theirs?
Uh, I believe so, yeah, it is, yeah.
If they had it out there and they brought it back.
Yeah, we had it out here, then they took it out there, now they want it back.
I just don't think we know people, anybody on this, on their yard like that.
My biggest thing is if you're going to do it week after week, it's gonna, it'll wear on the yard. I mean, it's finally do an event every now and then, but you do it.
We had that revival here a few weeks ago.
Every week.
I wasn't a big fan of that.
Yeah, they did.
Because I just, you know, I just put $4,000 in a yard work, and, you know, and.
If they're using the gazebo for something, you know, people got lawn chairs, that's a little bit different. But when you're putting up tents and in the same spot, week after week, and just.
Yeah.
So no, no to that. It's administrative type thing, so.
That works.
All right, thanks, Gary. HR, Jenny?
First thing is a request for a student intern. It would be an unpaid position for the HR department. It would not be handling anything personnel related. It's specifically looking for a student who's interested in marketing that could do some work on sprucing up job recruitment advertisements, some social media stuff for us to kind of get our, get us out there a little bit more to be able to amp up our recruitment. And then there's some miscellaneous data entry stuff. I've got some spreadsheets that could be done that are not confidential information, no medical information, nothing like that. It'd be a high school student.
Our social media might take a huge jump if we get a high school kid doing it.
Yeah.
No offense to whoever does any of it.
We, it, we don't really have anybody that does this, so.
Most of us don't.
I have no problem with it. Motion approved.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the unpaid intern for HR, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Okay, and then the last thing is request to have a closed government day on September the 23rd. This would allow for us to practice our continuity of government planning as well as do some safety training in-house. And this is the date that works for the courts.
As I say, I think this would be a good idea.
Yep.
I'd make a motion to approve September 23rd as a closed to the public work day for training.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the September 23rd, 2025 as the county training day for the county government, closed to the public. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Thanks. Parks Department. Mary.
I was contacted by Brightpoint in Northeast Indiana, they had someone who would like to intern with the Parks Department. We have not had a chance to interview him yet, so I'm not sure if we will want to use him. But, so I don't know if you want to give permission now or have me come back in two weeks when we know for sure.
I think we can give permission pending their approval.
If we do, we would need, he would need to be able to drive our vehicles and use our mowers and.
Which that would be no different, just get the information and notify the insurance.
She knows.
Yeah.
So you do any other employee, but.
He would be paid, we, it wouldn't be no cost, uh, Brightpoint would pay him.
I'd make a motion to approve them to make the decision whether they want the intern or not.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the position if they, the only person eligible for working for the Parks Department, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
I do have a purchase request. Tetrix donated some money to use on their property up at Pine Knob, so we'd like to purchase a pavilion from Relaxation Creations on 700 South for $3,200 to put up there.
Money was donated for it, so.
Yeah.
Motion approved.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the $3,200 for the pavilion, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Nine o'clock.
It's really close.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, we have a petition to vacate, 9:00 AM, Gingrich, are they here? Dustin, one up.
Morning. Morning, commissioners. Um, my name's Dustin Glick, I'm with Everhard Weimer in Glick's office, 115 South Detroit Street, here in La Grange. Um, I'm appearing here on behalf of Mr. Gingrich. Mr. Gingrich and his wife are here today, they're in the back, if there's any other questions that I couldn't answer. But this is a petition to vacate and piece of land there in Shipshewana. It's an undeveloped portion of West 350 North. It's directly adjacent to the Valley Hills subdivision. And I do appreciate the new procedure for submitting these petitions to vacate to give us some time as a preliminary petition and fix things. Because Mr. Bentrup and myself had some, had some fun trying to figure this one out. Because it was originally believed this piece was a part of the Valley Hills subdivision. Um, because it does appear in three different additions of the subdivision, acknowledge this road, but none of them actually included in their legal description. So low and behold, it appears that it is outside of the subdivision, but it does refer to it in all of those as a platted way that it meets up with State Road 5. Mr. Gingrich is directly to the north, he's actually lot one in the Valley Hills subdivision. He is directly north, the party directly to the south of the area to be vacated is Naomi and James and Naomi Hot Cellar, which they have also signed a quitclaim deed to Mr. Gingrich, anticipating if this is granted, that they have, they don't want any interest in that, they're not, they are in no need of that property if it is vacated. But again, it's, it's just a grass lot, it meets up to lot two, State Road 5 from the Valley Hills subdivision. Um, it's never been developed or no roads been put there. Not certain, the highway department would be thrilled with an access to Valley Hills right there on State Road 5. So I'm not sure that it would ever be developed into a roadway. There's no, there's no utilities or anything else there, it's just a bare grass property that Mr. Gingrich has been maintaining, mowing, keeping track of, because it is next to his house there. So what he's asking for, of course, is to vacate that area. It may be, has a kind of a double stamp here if we needed to. If this is granted, that he may also do a quiet title action just to cover our basis, just with any potential unknowns with this piece of land. And as I stated, it's an empty lot, so it wouldn't, it's not hindering growth or orderly development of the county. It is, it's just a vacant piece of land that's been there, was potentially going to be a road that connected to 5, but hasn't been done in the many years since Valley Hills has been developed. The vacation of that land is not going to make access to the lands of any aggrieved parties, difficult or inconvenient. There's, I think, two different accesses to Valley Hills that you can get in there, it's not cutting off anybody's access to any properties. It's not cutting off any access to church, schools, or any other public building or place. And also is not hindering, the vacating public way is not hindering. Would not hinder the use of a public way by the neighborhood in which it's located. So again, this has never been used by Valley Hills, it's never been developed, so I don't think it's cutting off any access. Everyone would still be able to access that property. So we submitted that petition, Mr. Gingrich is asking that it be vacated, notice was provided to all the adjacent landowners based on the updated adjacent landowner definition. And every, notice has been provided to everybody, and we would just ask the commissioners to consider vacating that plotted way there.
That's right there.
Just so you know, our office agrees with Dustin, the petition, the notice and the ordinance that I have for you today to consider are all in order. You know, and your staff, plan commission and the county engineer both commented that they don't see any objections with it. But of course, just for the formality of it, you want to make sure to ask the public, if there's any other comments. Once you've done that, we would recommend approval of the ordinance.
I think originally they were going to put a road in there, but I don't think the state have wanted them because of the hill there coming up when you're heading south. Visibility's not that great, so they moved the entrance down. So, but.
Sherry's not.
Yeah. We have any comments from the public on this? No comments there, so. What do you guys want to do? I don't see an issue with it.
I don't either.
I don't think the county highway is going to do anything there in the near future, so.
Five.
No.
Okay, so I'd make a motion to approve the ordinance vacating the public way. I don't have a, I don't really have a number or anything to put on that. Okay, Kathy will have it, okay.
The motion is second to approve the vacate of the property on public way. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. For a second reading?
Motion to a second reading.
The motion is second for a second reading, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Thanks, Dustin. Let's see. We'll then close this public hearing then, so next we got surveyor Zach.
Morning.
Morning, Doug.
We received two bids for our old 2016 Dodge Ram. Kathy has those bids, if you guys would want to order one of those, the high one, I imagine, be able to get rid of that vehicle and get the money put back in the accounts where it came from to purchase originally.
That's the one they want, I guess they have two, one for five, something. So it was old farm truck. Just need to approve the whole title.
So I'll make a motion to approve the sale of the old surveyor vehicle, Dodge truck. And have the president sign the title.
The motion is second to approve the sale of the surveyor's old truck for $6,279 and have the president sign the title. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Oh, EMA. Is he here?
Well, there's no storms, he's got to be in town.
I don't know, he seems to be going off a lot lately.
That might be my.
Speaking of.
Looking for approval to attend an out-of-state training. Uh, it'd be November 16th to 20th, it's the International Association of Emergency Managers Conference down in Louisville, Kentucky.
You need to be trained to go out of state? I think you do okay with that.
Trying to get better.
He's always training.
I've been ready when we have an emergency, then, right?
Hopefully.
I don't have any issues with it. You're going to take the truck, because I was, yeah.
And it's in Louisville, so if you still have an emergency, you'll still pick up Signal in Louisville from Indiana, right? Your 800 will still come through, if you're listening.
We'll see. My phone will work.
I make a motion to approve the out-of-state training for the EMA director.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the out-of-state training for the EMA director, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Thanks, Bill. Okay, 2026 holiday schedule. I think I missed anybody there.
I think so.
Yeah, it is, we've got election days in there next year. 15 days. I don't, I don't see any issues with it.
I, I don't have any real issues with it, no.
Yes. I, only thing I have is New Year's Day. Have Thursday off and work Friday, but what are you going to do?
So.
Change Columbus Day?
I'll make a motion to approve that 2026 holiday schedule is presented.
Second.
I know, I thought about it.
If you guys want to, you can.
Technically, that would be on the 27th schedule, so we can approve that still.
We can approve it till January.
Next year at this time, when we.
Oh, that's for next, the 27th.
Okay, so scratch that. Withdraw my motion. Sorry, you guys don't know you're getting 15 days off next year.
So what, what'd you guys do?
I drew my motion. Can't do it till January.
No.
No.
The one he's talking about, New Year's Day. Or the day after New Year's Day, right?
No, it's.
January 2nd.
January 2nd.
Take the January 1, which is a Thursday off.
26.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the end of.
No, 26.
So we can't approve this, right?
Yeah.
We can approve this for next year, right?
Yes, you're approving this now for next year.
He just didn't know if you guys wanted to change.
I was throwing out the possibility.
About changing Columbus.
Columbus Day and giving them two days off.
To eliminate.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Because it's on a Thursday, so they're going to get Thursday off and go back to work on Friday.
Yeah, well, I don't think, I mean, I don't like Columbus Day, it's that big of a deal. I think, I don't know, I think people would rather have a four-day weekend instead of Columbus Day off. My opinion, I don't know.
Probably.
I, yeah, sorry, Kevin, I didn't mean to, I don't understand where you're.
So we can.
So I'd make a motion to take.
Nope, wrong one.
If you're going to start scratching them all, I'll wait to make my motion until you're done. So I'd make a motion to take January 1st and 2nd off and not take off Columbus Day. So they have the same amount of days, should be 15 of them.
Second.
We have motion second to approve the holiday schedule has changed. If the change is to it, no Columbus Day, but we'll have January 1st and 2nd off. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I screwed up, scratched out that one, so it's okay. The count's payable. I didn't see anything in there.
Standing, motion approved.
Second.
The motion is second to approve count's payable, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Minutes from July 7th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second to approve minutes from July 7th. Memorandum from July 16th and executive session on July 16th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second to approve both, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Kurt, do you have something else?
Yeah, one final thing, passes down to one to Kathy. I'm sorry, I didn't, I refrained from discussing this before because I didn't want to put Judge Wallace in an awkward position since this involves this court, and I did not see him on the agenda. So I wanted to report to you that fortunately with the cooperation and collaboration with the plan commission, thank you, Robbie. we were successful last week in obtaining, um, a significant court order from, uh, the circuit court. And if you go to the very last page, you can see that, um, judgment was entered against not only, uh, Mr. Neely, and any tenants that live at thirty-four forty-five South, eleven forty-five East LaGrange, but also against Bald Guy Investment Group. We finally got service on that entity, right? An expensive publication process, as you know, and Judge Walls did agree with us and, um, awarded, uh, five thousand dollars to the plan commission and six thousand eight hundred dollars to the county, as well as ordered, um, them to abate the nuisance and to correct the zoning violations. So, uh, we are, of course, waiting thirty days to take any further enforcement action, because that's the appeal period. And, uh, once that appeal period passes, if there is no, uh, further activity, we're going to come to you and request that we continue to move forward with whatever we need to do, which could include foreclosing on the property similar to, uh, the property, if you recall, on twenty, uh, by, um, Plato. Uh, that would be the process. So just wanted you to see that, I know that's something you've been striving for, for a couple of years at least. And, um, so we're thankful for the result and we'll just see what happens with the appeal period. But, um, want to really, uh, give a lot of credit to Robbie and Dustin for their assistance in that, because it was a tag-team effort, so.
It'd definitely be nice to get that place cleaned up down there. People would really appreciate that.
So what, if you're asked, there's a copy of the order, it specifically says what they're required to do. Obviously, if they don't do it, we're going to continue back into court again, but at least this is, uh, you know, we've got some finality by now.
Is there any option to, if they don't do it, that we could go in and clean it up and I could go onto their bill?
We're gonna have to get a court order.
Right.
But yes, so that's an option.
I have a feeling that may be end up where it, just the way it's gone.
We can end up foreclosing like they did.
Yes.
And just get the properties. To me, I think I'd rather do that than.
Probably, it'd probably be cheaper.
Yeah, I mean, that's what you three are going to need to think about, what do, what process. I mean, in a perfect world, they'll write the checks and clean it up.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to work on that with plan commission and with Dustin.
Anything else?
Do you have anything else, you?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
The motion is second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Word adjourned, thanks.